Meeting of the last meeting.
Yeah, Carlos.
These are done, right? All right, Chairman's comments, I ain't got any. Keep it short, sweet, and simple. Uh, old business, we ain't got any. Uh, new business, we only have two people that were on the original petitions that showed up. Of course, it's only six thirty, and meeting started six thirty, that means seven o'clock around here. So, we'll wait a little bit for that. Vivian's not here, Rob's not here, Carol's not here.
Uh, I'm, I can talk to the Carol thing. She told me she wasn't gonna be here.
Who's that?
Carol, our webmaster. Okay, the, uh, webmaster thing is our website provider is moving us to a new system at no charge. However, the feds have now said we have to have an ADA compliant website. Um, apparently, it's being enforced. And it's gonna cost us seven K a year to have an ADA compliant website. Seven thousand a year, seven, seven K. Yeah, otherwise, yeah. So she wants to know what to tell them. I guess we have to say, go ahead.
I'm all set with that. I mean, it's, what, what are we paying now?
I don't know.
Free.
No, it's not free.
No, it was around five.
Yeah, so it adds a couple thousand bucks.
Yep, for a new updated system.
Which we have to, which we have to do, so. All right, I'll tell her to go ahead then.
Okay.
It's to be signed by, I think, just one of you. Just give that to Ken.
Today, fourteenth? Thirteenth? All right, and Vivian is here.
Not on.
It was on.
Oh, it is, or maybe it is on, all right.
Should've been on.
Little green light on.
Well, you'll have to write that out.
Hello?
Yep.
Yep. Vivian Wells, Rec Department. Um, just to ask about the, uh, plans for cruise night coming up this summer. Uh, same thing, second Mondays of the months of June, July, and August. And see if that's acceptable as we have been doing.
So those dates would be six nine, seven fourteen, and eight eleven.
Right.
Anybody have any issues with that?
Nope.
Move to approve. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the second thing, which was not on the, uh, except I got the email this morning from Advantage Tennis that they have us on a calendar for beginning of August for starting the work.
Okay.
So at least I know that much, and I will respond and get people looped in, so you keep abreast.
Okay.
Is there one select board member in general, or I can just do, um, CC? The board?
Just send it to the board, all three of us will get it.
Okay.
Or send it to Carol.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she could send it out to us. Um, I would like to get Highway up there to get that backboard thing down, that's about falling off the fence anyways. And can we get the fence people to get out there as well?
I will be in contact with them. I'll get, Danny was the one who had a contact for that.
Okay.
So I'll make sure about that, but I also wanna make sure about being in sync with Advantage for them, um, knowing about the fence repair and stuff like that. Um, kinda seems to me that if we're talking about sections, it's best for the, to be done after the, the resurfacing, or?
Well, I don't, I don't want them dropping stuff on the new surface.
Right.
Is my thing.
I see, yeah.
First, because there's only so many ways in that place and so many ways out.
Again, I, I understand, that's a good point. Hadn't really thought the whole thing through. I'm, I'm, I've not ever been watching over, so it's like, okay, how do they actually get in there with the equipment when the place is all fenced off?
Big ladders, or they're gonna use a machine. I don't want them riding around on our new surface.
Yeah. So let me, um, let me get in touch with Danny, find out about who he's been engaged with. And then.
Okay.
Okay.
I assume Rob's not coming tonight again?
Rob sent message that he does not have anything new, um, to report in.
Okay.
So, and just to keep going on with C C, CPCNH.
Well.
We're not gonna keep him on the list if he's not gonna show up.
Right, so is he?
No, I, he's.
I'm not gonna keep it on the list, that's.
Right.
Yeah, all right, just take him off, um.
And thank you for that.
The, the question that people were asking was the CPCNH rates are higher than ever sources right now, and there are rumors going around they're in financial trouble, so we were hoping for an update on that.
I'm gonna report that into Rob and have him write an email to the board.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
And thank you for your patience, so. All right, but that's what I have to report, and thank you very much.
So cruise night's all set. So unless you wanna stay here and you got a sharp pencil to stick in your eye, you'll go, I'm worth nothing to go.
So, goodnight, everyone.
You too.
Night, Tim.
No, it's all right.
All right, we got ever-source poll license?
Yeah, I talked to legal a couple months ago about, they said it's routine, some towns try to negotiate for some extra stuff, but we never have, and I don't know why we would.
I don't know why we would. It's not like we have competitors waiting to put polls in our,
Right.
our ground. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. The eyes have it. And we have a bunch of permits.
He's gonna be signing the whole thing for me to send back.
Yep.
Do we keep deferring the school thing till later?
Yeah, I mean, I hate to keep these guys sitting here if nobody else is gonna show up.
Yeah, I doubt anybody's gonna show up, so.
Yeah, it shouldn't take us long to get through this, and then we'll get back to that.
Okay.
Uh, approved solar permit, Reading, Webster Highway. Move to approve. Second, I hope this is not all the paperwork that was with this. There should be a whole list of labels and equipment that they're gonna install, it's not here.
In here, but I, I just have it with my original. I didn't copy it all for you guys.
Okay.
Least a couple trees.
Uh, review and approve building permit application, Fisher, could be run. This is one of the, um, subdivisions that PRD, um.
Oh, that Randy's setting up, yep.
The new lots. We went over the square footage of okay.
I just need to get Pete's approval. He will not approve it right now because the well pump installer or whatever does not have a mass, I mean, a New Hampshire license, so I contacted the owners and they're working on. So this will just be pending Pete's approval. You guys wanna approve it now, but I will not issue the permit.
Okay, yeah, fine with me.
That's fine.
I didn't know he had his PRD set up already.
Yeah, he's got his subdivision.
That was quick.
Next one would be an elderly exemption from, for Bernati. According to Mr. Robert at Avatar, I recommend the board approve this application.
All right, so move.
George is second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So three out of thirty, what's that, one percent?
Thank you. Sure, why not?
And then the guy that started it all didn't even show up.
Wouldn't be bothered.
Yeah, but he, he's the one that said in the meeting, "Well, I, I changed my mind."
Yeah, but he said it as a, uh.
Yeah, that's right. Not wanting to the.
Fact that he's the one that did it.
Yeah.
And then we have Lynn Lenat's Applewood for a greenhouse and a shed. I've already reviewed all of these setbacks and everything else, and I believe this is just a minimum breach.
Yes.
Okay, he did two separate permits, yeah.
Yeah, do we need two separate, well, I guess we do need two separate permits.
I guess.
Do we need to double charge them on a?
Well, they're two separate buildings.
Yeah, two separate.
I think we should have an investigation.
Yeah.
Right, Mary.
Yeah, man, if you get a building.
We should have an investigation on your property.
Our property, yeah.
Um.
No, we're gonna approve both of them. We're gonna approve both of them, no problem. Um, I'm just questioning the fact that we gotta charge you twice for two things that don't. And the inspector really only has to go out there once. If you put them both up and there's no delay between, then he can just sign off at once if you wanna do that. I'm okay. If you guys are okay with only charging her the fifty instead of a hundred?
Yeah, sure, it's like, you know, you build a house and a garage.
Garage, it'd be the same, right.
Yeah.
No, I've got everything I need. I will issue you the permits and just, you'll just pay me fifty dollars. And I'll give you, just give you.
As long as you're gonna do them at the same time, so they can be inspected. Okay. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, as much as we'd like to charge it double-dipping, but it doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. So we'll pay for the one, and we'll have the one inspection, and that's all that's needed there.
They're good people, yeah.
All right.
Jesus. They're cooking right through this here.
What happens when I change these?
And nobody shows up, except for people that show up.
Nobody shows up. You invite thirty people, thirty-two people, and no one shows up.
How many petitions?
Awesome, huh?
Hundred petitions?
There's thirty-something petitions.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, we don't have anything else but minutes, and we can do that last. Um, the reason we invited, sent letters to you guys was that petition was put out. Um, and now it's costing us money to do this feasibility study. But no one is telling them what we want, because no one from the group stepped up and formed a committee to do that. Um, we have to know the parameters of what the, um, the people on the uh, warrant want them to study. We have to have, um, we have to do our numbers, in fact, as to whether we wanna keep our elementary school. And if so, what's it gonna cost us? We have to do this work. Uh, what's it gonna cost us to run the school? Um, and outright buy the school back from Conville. Um, and we're gonna keep our kids in T E S here, that's fine, and then what are we gonna do? We're gonna petition or, um, tuition them out to Conville or to, um, Con, Con, Conant?
Conant, yeah.
Conant or, uh, Messenic are the only closer ones, so, um, all of this stuff needs to be done, and, and nobody has stepped up to, uh, to do any of it.
Let me make a clarification. I'm not sure about the signatures on the list, but I was informed directly there'd be no charge to Temple in any way, shape, or form.
Oh, no, there is no charge to Temple by itself, no.
There's no costs.
No, 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 that's not true.
Exactly, but, so therefore, myself and Kristen are withdrawing our signature on that because we all lied to, basically.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, in order to act, so, I was on the, the last uh, withdrawal committee thing. It is a lot of preparation, a lot of work, as, as Ken said, and there's definite legal expenses. So what we can do is we can have a special town meeting that we just have right here, uh, to vote to withdraw that article. And it seems like that's what we should do.
That would have to be very fast, though, because I think they're gonna have the first committee meeting on the twenty-eighth of May.
Yeah, we need to, we'd have to.
And there's a lot of stuff that has to be done before then.
Yep.
We have to form a committee.
Yep.
Feasibility Study Committee of some volunteers.
Which we're not gonna have, because.
If you're saying it's not gonna cost Temple anything, it's gonna cost the taxpayers a bundle of money with legal and everything else.
Yeah.
But that wasn't how it was actually proposed.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
That's why we're withdrawing.
Yeah.
And it's all about the whole school district doing this, so the, uh, people at SAU One have, have got a group to do this, their part of the feasibility study, whatever we ask them to do. And it has to go through legal, their legal, our legal, um, all that stuff, but like I said, no one's telling them what to do, so they don't know what we want from this study. Nobody has stepped up on the whole list of people that signed that petition to, to form a committee to, to, uh, explore this. So I, I don't know what we do from here other than to do a special town meeting.
Yeah, I think we should do that. We should schedule it pretty quick. It's just gonna be a one, a very quick thing, so. Yeah, I, I know.
Sure, too, that.
Well, somebody better show up to vote for it, but yeah. Yeah, so.
Were you for the withdrawal, Keith? Were you, were you for this feasibility study?
Were you for the study? He was originally, but he now is not.
He's one of the designers, he's one of the designers.
But, but he was also told that it was no cost at all.
Right. So I checked with legal. The town has fulfilled its responsibility by notifying Conville that there was a petition warrant article that passed. And that's it. We're not doing anything else. So right now, there's this limbo committee that does not exist, and it's, we, we, we mean to withdraw the, the article, really comes down to that.
We have a bunch of people on the school committees, um, George doing the SAC committee, and, um, Pam and her husband Jim.
Jim Kingston.
Are doing the other part of the, um, their part of the school board, uh, people for the town of Temple. And they just don't wanna get into this because this is way too much work. And if nobody else is willing to do it, I think we have no choice, so we're gonna have to set up a date.
Real soon.
Like, we, we should get a meeting tonight, find out when we can put it in the paper room, when we can have a meeting.
Yeah, let's do it.
The, uh, the committee required to convene its first meeting no later than sixty days following its creation or by the vote at the annual meeting with the established committee, so that's
So.
Sixty days from the March election.
Yep, so, already. So let's do it, can we, we could probably do it next week, I'm fine with next week.
I, I'm fine, too. Um, I was just looking at calendars.
Next Tuesday?
Well, however, we gotta.
Yeah, next two, well, we, we need time for notice.
Yeah, I gotta get a notice in the paper.
Notice has to go in the paper, and then we have to have it posted in three places in town. So.
That's the only requirement?
Yep.
Yeah. So if we can do it the, the twentieth, if we have time for notice, but you're not in tomorrow, you won't be until Thursday.
I won't get anything done till, till Thursday, and if we do the ledger, it, it'll be too late, it'll be next Tuesday before we get an ledger.
Yeah, okay.
And you said George is twenty-eighth?
I believe so.
Okay, so the twenty-seventh, we have a meeting anyways, wanna do it that meeting?
Okay, let's, let's put that, the special town meeting either before or after. What do you wanna do, before or after?
Before and after what meeting?
Uh, we'll just do it at six thirty, and then we can run our meeting after this.
Yep, all right.
We'll do a hearing first, and then we'll do the regular meeting.
Yeah, okay.
At six thirty, so.
Our next regular meeting.
Yeah, it's like twenty-seventh.
And we'll do the special town meeting at six thirty and start the select board meeting immediately thereafter.
Okay.
And just so you guys know, um, we sent everybody on that list out a letter, the same letter you guys got. So, and you, and you see who, who showed up.
Right.
Yep.
So you'll be on the record.
Yeah, Paul Clifton Wade, Old Revolutionary Road. Yeah, I was one of the petitioners, uh, one of the residents who signed the petition. I'm agnostic on the matter. I just wanted to put it before the town and see what the town wanted. Personally, I think it's likely an expensive proposition to form your own school district, but again, I'm not the town, I just wanted to put it out there. And as Keith stated, there was supposed to be no cost to the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think probably if there's no other interest besides myself in serving on a committee, and I'm happy to serve, happy not to serve, um, we may as well withdraw, you know, from the matter.
Well, thank you for that, and we're both, we're, we're gonna invite you guys both to the, uh, to the next meeting.
The, uh, school board, the school board and the, uh, select board advisory committee met together two weeks ago, I believe it was on Thursday night. And we were of the opinion that, uh, this might all be settled at the first joint meeting on May twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth because uh, Francis Town is trying to do this again.
Yeah.
But, but the whole problem is, this is gonna take a lot of work by the committees to go through all this. And it's, Keith says it's not gonna be an expense to the town, but it is to the taxpayers.
Yeah, I don't, if, no, if you saw the withdrawal study that Dublin presented, which is mandatory, I mean, it's all kinds of PowerPoints and graphs and statistics and legal opinions, and they speak.
We have access to that material as well.
But it's for them, not for us.
So if, if we do later on decide that we do want to pull out or do want to do a feasibility study, I just don't think now is the right time to do it. We have no direction, we have no cost, we have no anything.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, in fact, we, and a lot of this financial stuff that applies to Temple was determined in the, in the hearing that I was part of. It would definitely not save us money, it would cost us money.
We would have to buy the building, we would have to maintain the building, we would have to put teachers in it, we would have to put a uh, principal in it, we would have to have our own elementary school district here.
Yep.
And then we'd still have to pay tuition, whether we sent them there or wherever else. It'd still be a cost per student to, to, to do that.
The real killer is that if you get a special needs kid in, you have to pay for them, but you can't budget it, because you don't know if you're gonna get one or not. So some kid could come in and cost us two hundred thousand dollars a year, and we'd have to come up with the money.
Dublin and Francis Town both went through this. But you had to have sixty percent approved to get this passed. And neither of them did. Now Francis Town is going through it again. And they were, start their own SAU, but then tuition their stu, their students to Conville High School. And they probably will fail again.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's a lot of work, and.
And I'm not gonna do it again, going to those meetings.
Yeah, I mean, the thing, too, is that, um, you know, all these names, all these names on this petition, and they want us to take care of it all. And that's not how this works. The, the board takes no position on a petition warrant either.
Right.
I thank you guys for coming, and hope to see you next week so we can figure this out.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So, all right.
It's good that two people showed up out of the thirty.
Free. Ricky were on the list, too, right?
Yeah.
Thank yous.
Well, we understand.
Oh. Thank you, guys. All right, so we wanna do minutes?
Yeah, gee, we can wrap up in three minutes, we'll be out by eight.
Minutes from, uh, April twelve, twenty twenty-five. And that was a Monday night meeting at six thirty.
Yep.
I had no problems.
The only thing I had is, um, we, we have, um, page one, one, two, three, four bullet points down. It says, "Review Town Hall Fee Waiver Request."
Mm-hmm.
Um, was there a name of that group or a name of that person who, who did that we can put in there, because this doesn't tell anybody anything.
Yeah, right, whoever it was that wanted to do it, stick their name in there.
And that's all I had.
I move to accept as amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any other business?
Mm.
I have one from, uh, Highway. Highway has one of our generators over there. Um, he says it runs, but it doesn't create any electricity. He wants to know if we can get rid of it. It's just in his way now. Um, and this weekend, they're having the white elephant tail down there.
Yeah.
So we can ask for donation for it and see what we get for it, but it's only half-working.
What is that?
The generator, one of the generators, the old generators that we had from two thousand eight.
Oh.
Huh.
So if you guys are okay with that, we'll send it down there, and we'll ask them to just separate that and give that, uh,
Yep.
Donation, whatever it is, to Carol. Um, and we'll also put a note on it that, you know, it runs, but it does not create electricity. I, it's probably just something stupid.
The breaker on?
I don't know. I mean, you know, it could be something that stupid. Could be a mouse chew, one of the wires, too, so.
I have a couple of things I wanna talk about.
Okay, go ahead.
First, uh, I've had two or three complaints now against, uh, Nick who bought the property from Vivian. He comes in on Hudson Road. I've heard that there's a massive junk pile all up next to the road.
Uh-huh.
So I was gonna call the person that lives on that road, and she should get a petition amongst the neighbors. So when they send this letter to the select board, we can address it at our next meeting.
Okay.
And it's, uh, I get, I've been told is, he's gonna mess up here.
Okay, the, the other. Another one.
Roads?
Nick Rhodes.
Nick Rhodes? The guy that's down the store all the time talking?
Yes.
Okay.
He's a nice guy.
So the other way we can do this, too, is to a- and I know we don't have, but um, we don't have a code enforcement officer, but I can write a letter as to what uh zoning issues are being violated.
Mm-hmm.
And what he's looking at for fines and what he would be looking at in terms of time to get that stuff out of there. And then we could bring that to a meeting and sign it and send it.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
If that would be okay.
Yep.
That okay with you?
Yeah.
So then we don't have to have the
You say you're gonna draft.
I'll draft a letter. And then we don't have to have the the uh residents down there do it. We'll just do it as a zoning violation.
So.
I have one other thing I wanna talk about, uh. I talked to Bill about uh swapping positions on the planning board. Bill would come on the planning board and I could go on the BAC, I guess it is.
Our police board?
Or police board.
Yeah, whatever, I don't care.
The only thing I wanna warn you about. Plan for two-hour meetings, starting at from seven to nine. I'm not saying you have to do this. I'm just telling you what it's gonna be. Uh planning board wants to include having people wanting to install solar panels to get planning board site plan approval. So they really wanna almost take over our job.
Yeah, I don't know why that makes any sense.
It's about, it's about Jim Medero from the North Road. He is putting solar panels on his house, so the whole thing, I've read it, it's about a ten-page thing. And it says that uh you can't build a, put a solar panel more than four feet high, forty feet high. Which is our regulations anyway.
Right.
You have to be inside the setback.
Hmm.
So uh, and that's part of that plan. But then they go into all these things, that you gotta have the dimensions and but we do all that.
Yeah, yeah.
So what they're gonna do is add ten more pages to the planning board.
Well, they can draft something and we can uh recommend that we don't do that because we already do that on the building side.
Um, I don't think we need to draft anything.
Well, I know.
We've already got the, it's part of the select board job.
We can't tell them that they can't draft something.
Right.
No, they can, they can draft it and Bill can Bill can take my place.
Right.
Cause I've already told them on the planning board. The select board already does the same.
Yep.
We get Will Wilds. He approves it. And then if Will Wilds approves it. More than Mike and we would approve it.
Correct. And the the other thing, too, with that is also we give a solar exemption to those who have solar.
Right.
So once they get the solar and fill out the solar exemption, so are they gonna change the solar exemption as well? That doesn't um, that does not compute to me.
We have a whole lot of committees that seem to be wanting to take over much more power in these days than they should.
So, and we can address that, too. Um, a- at a future meeting here.
Hmm.
As far as um, code enforcement or uh, building, creating a building department or something thereof the effect um to alleviate some of that.
Okay.
Because if we, if we already have it in a uh, a planned uh, building a process, then they would have to change the whole process, not just the solar part. They would have to change the whole thing.
Yeah. Well, fine. I've been on the planning board before, um try it out.
So you don't mind?
I'll let you know after I try it out.
Oh. Your wife said you really wanted to be on this.
Yeah, right. Um, so George, why don't you take my spot on the police board?
Yeah, we don't have anything till September now, I believe, unless this, unless something comes up.
What am I gonna do in between?
Well, we don't have anything on BAC either till September, so.
Right.
George, relax, go golfing.
Somebody wanna be on the SAC?
No. That it.
Alright, we got anything else? We still have some papers here to sign?
Yes. More of these damn things?
Yep.
These are all doing. And I forget such a pile of these things, so. That we already did.
What's going, you got?
Maybe it's somebody's.
I'm liking these stamps.
Yeah. Wait.
Yeah, it writes better than I do.
Yeah, you did that one. See, I told you they wouldn't put away the chairs whenever.
Of course not. Hmm.
Anything else good for the town? For the good of the town?
Hmm.
Um No, I've been to a lot of meetings other places.
Yep.
And we seem to be the only ones that don't start with a pledge of allegiance.
No.
You guys have any preference?
The uh first time I was chairman of the select board. I had him say the pledge of allegiance. They did do it. I know Linebrow does it every select board meeting.
Linebrow does it, Wilton does it, Ringe does it.
Pledge of allegiance.
Only problem I have is nobody's here to do it.
No flag either.
There's, there's right there.
Hello?
Oh. Oh, you mean.
No, no. Big giant red, white, and blue thing right there?
Um so, I don't care. It's just, like, it's just gonna be us.
Does anybody wanna make that motion?
To adjourn?
We can adjourn, too.
Okay. Did George say something?
No, we just have the motion to adjourn.
Alright, well, do it. Let's start the meeting then.
You going to second?
I'll second.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
That's all done.
Meeting is ended. Anybody show up on there?
They never do anymore. Although.